Peg, are they ready back there for me?
Are you guys ready?
Yes.
They're ready? Okay. All right. All right. I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, June 24th, 2020, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. She got the message.
Yay. Nagina's there.
Okay. First item is, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Roll call vote. Mary? Jim? Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. All right. Motion is passed. All right. We will start with board reports. Mrs. Weaver?
Nothing. Just listened to the town hall this evening. It was very, very well presented.
Okay. Kathy?
I attended via WebEx MAB Resolutions Committee meeting on Monday, and I had a fair amount of input into the resolutions that are being proposed to be amended or updated, specifically on, we currently have a policy for digital learning, but it said nothing about distance learning. And so I was able to prevail in convincing the group that we needed to make some significant changes so that there was an understanding there is a difference between digital learning as has been used and now the distance learning that's going on. So I'm very pleased to say that my suggestions were welcomed by the group.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. I attended the MAB Nominating Committee for the Board of Directors. It was a very good meeting. We got everything done. We had a Zoom meeting, so that was very good. Also, I attended the virtual town hall meeting that just was held at 4:00 to about 5:00 o'clock today that Dr. Smith hosted, and Tammy McCourt, Dr. Walker, Dr. Farrell, Mike Wyant, and Dr. Montgomery were there to give an update to the citizens on the, you know, where we are and where we are going with the opening of school and the safety precautions and everything that we have to do. So the citizens can look at that online. There were 635 people who tuned in to see it, and it was very good. And they received 70 questions, although all 70 questions couldn't be answered. They hit several other questions, and then the superintendent had to do the Board of Education meeting, which started at 5:00. So I thank the superintendent and his executive team, especially communications, for getting the word out. Everything the community needs to know is on the school system website. And if they have questions, it's going to be a question and answer portion of the virtual town hall meeting, and those questions and answers will be posted online. So St. Mary's County Public Schools is way ahead with the communication piece. So all you have to do, that's where you go if you want to get the facts and not the rumors. Thank you.
All right. Jim?
Nothing.
Okay. Nagina?
Okay. So SAC has formed our new steering committee since many of the past members have now graduated. And yesterday, we got together over a Zoom call with Dr. Moore and Dr. Smith to discuss starting our plans for next school year. So with that, we are in the process of coming up with ideas of holding a youth summit that we didn't get to have this past year in the fall, either in person or virtually, depending on the situation at that time.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see. I have just continued to field several calls from our county commissioners regarding the computer purchases that we have made and will still continue to need to make to support our students in the upcoming school year. So I thank Dr. Smith and Tammy McCourt, who have turned around information very rapidly in response to several of those questions. So, and that's about it. We were in the back room for the town hall, so very well done. A lot of the questions, to Mrs. Washington's point, that were, I think that came in, I think that Dr. Smith had addressed them during the course of the presentation as well. So it worked out perfectly because based on, you know, your presentation and the time allotted at the end, I think, you know, Dr. Montgomery picked out the ones that had not already been covered during the course of, you know, of your slideshow. So, thank you very much for doing that. And, you know, with the volume of people, we started with about 445 people and ended up with the 636. So it's good to see that people joined in as, you know, as it was going on. So it might be a new day. Everyone can sit at their computers and truly be warriors and watch everything, so.
We like when people tune in.
Yes.
As opposed to when they tune out.
That's exactly right. So, and that's all I have. So, Dr. Smith?
Yeah.
The floor is yours.
I don't really have much to add other than we, there is, there is a lot of, there is an incredible amount of work ahead of us in the next several weeks to prepare for whatever comes in the fall. I have to tell you, you have, once again, you have really great people working within your school system on behalf of your kids. They are such an incredibly persistent and hopeful group. Whenever a task is put before them, they really do, they really do fall to the work. And I think it's just, it's quite, it's quite a testament to our school system and the people that we have. Congratulations to all of our students who have completed the 2020 school year. May we never see another like it. And congratulations to all of our teachers who concluded the 2020 school year. The last day for teachers was Monday of this week. Teachers still have a great deal of learning to do over the summer, professional development to really master the new learning management system that we're putting in place, Schoology, to hone the skills of being able to deliver instruction over long distance through multimodal media platforms and videos and things such as that. And we, as a school system, have to become as creative as we possibly can to get messages out and keep them fresh and interesting. And we will do more town meetings. We are going to do them in a virtual format because it obviously seems as though we draw a more comprehensive audience than when we actually present ourselves publicly at the, like we did at the tech center. So that's really all I have, other than we will, boy, we're going to be doing a lot of work. And a lot of good, a lot of good work, a lot of really, really good work that regardless of the situation that we find ourselves in with the pandemic, all of the, all of the work that we're doing to provide really comprehensive and well-thought-out instruction is going to, is going to pay benefits. It's going to pay benefits in the short term. It's going to pay benefits in the long term.
I just have one more thing to add on about the end of school. Just a thank you to the teachers. As everyone knows, you know, my kids are in the school system. The volume of emails and checking in at the beginning and at the end of the week and/or as they completed a unit, and it wasn't necessarily a mass email out to everyone either. You know, as they completed a unit in the classroom, you know, algebra, you know, there was a lot of communication. There was a lot of back and forth. So even though I know everyone did struggle with the Ingenuity platform and that it was just a push-out type of instruction, I think most of the teachers went above and beyond to make sure that they still maintain that personal, you know, contact with students and, you know, just checking on them, reminding them to be safe. You know, everyone's uncertain about what's happening, things like that. So I think it was very well, very well received, so. Okay.
Fantastic.
All right. Let's see. We have no public hearing. We have no recognitions, public comment. It's closed. Still, send our email to boe@smcps.org. And the Safe Schools tickets are still being logged and disseminated out to the appropriate personnel in order to respond. And then with that, we have the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. The roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself as aye. So that motion is passed. And first up, we have, finally, the long-awaited parking lot expansion at Lady Marshall Dent.
I remember when we tried to buy the property.
Exactly. I remember when the property was destroyed by the hurricane that enabled you to buy the property.
Hold on. Before I do that, let me do...
Hold on. Scott's screen sharing.
Yeah. Wait. So I'm going to, I'm going to go into speaker mode so that I see speaker view and then go into my...
Screen sharing.
Screen sharing so that we'll just see Ms. Liano's head in the corner as she is presenting.
Perfect.
Look at that. Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. We're ready.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm here today to present the contract award for parking expansion at Lady Marshall Dent Elementary, award a general contractor services in the amount of $465,198 for the construction services and $5,800 construction contingency to J. Calvin Wood Jr., Inc., for the parking expansion at Lady Marshall Dent. Background, as you just were referring, we bought this property several years ago, and that permitted us to do an expansion of the parking and create a real bus loop, bus loop. And design construction back in 2018 requested services of a design consultant to determine the overall adequacy of the budget for the new concept plan. And this is a 2018 building infrastructure programmatic in the local capital improvement program. The scope includes the expansion, like I just said, of the existing staff and visitors' parking and reconfiguration of the existing bus lot. Right now, there, we share both into one. And with the design, I'm going to show you later, we're going to separate them. It includes grading of the property. It's a raw property, so a lot of earthwork needs to be moved there, new asphalt and sidewalk installation, milling and asphalt overlay of the existing parking lot, stripping and storm drainage improvements. And this work is scheduled to be completed by August 21 of this summer, 2020. I added this view here of the existing location to show you a better understanding. You probably, if you visited the school during drop-off or pickup, you know what I'm talking about. But I just colored those yellow lines to show you where the buses right now use as parking. And they are end-to-end. That means one bus behind the other and next to them in four lanes. And we share that space with the visitors' parking, one lane that is right there on, next to the first lane of buses, and then to the staff to the left. So existing condition, like I said, is end-to-end parking, the bus loading and unloading not separate from the traffic flow associated with the staff and visitors' parking. And then in the wide crossing that I showed there highlighted, the pedestrians have to cross in front of the buses. And students may need to walk in between buses when loading and unloading. And in conversations with the principal, she's manifest how difficult it is during the time of loading and unloading of students and how many staff they have to get out in order to keep the students safe. Improvements with this design, what we are looking is to eliminate the end-to-end parking, and instead, we'll be parking side-by-side in a designated area separate. Now, vehicular traffic, other than the school buses, would not be allowed near the buses, especially when loading and unloading students. And if you notice, there's an entrance separate for the parking of visitors. There's an entrance and exit for the buses. This will eliminate also the pedestrian crossing in front of the school buses. Now, since the buses are separate from the traffic of the cars, students will come directly out from a sidewalk into the school, and they don't have to cross any parking. Or vice versa. Where visitors or staff do not have to cross through the buses. And we are adding 10 additional parking spots to this project. Our procurement method used was an invitation to bid that was advertised on E-Myland Marketplace Advantage on June 2nd. And we received, we received notifications that 494 vendors, got notifications through the system. Out of those 494, 22 vendors tested bid documents. So that was a very good interest among the industry of people that wanted to bid on this project. And we got five contractors that submitted sealed bids. It's a very good number. And the recommendation for award for the lowest bidder, responsible and responsive, is J. Calvin Wood Jr., Inc. They have 30 years of experience in excavation, land clearing, grading, demolition, stormwater management, and road preparation, which are all parts of this project. J. Calvin Wood Jr., Inc. is a local company located in Calvert-St. Leonard. And they have experience, I mean, many others, but focusing projects for public works. And they have experience with Calvert County Government and St. Mary's County Government. Being Calvert, they had about $1.5 million on multiple projects around the county. They, and similar scope of what we are doing, they did also the landfill. And in St. Mary's, they participated recently in the FTR Boulevard project. They did the mitigation and the stormwater management. For the proposed fees, J. Calvin Wood Jr., Inc. fee in base bid is $453,537. And an alternate number one, the only alternate we put in the project, is $11,661 for a total award of $465,198. Alternate number one, I put a sneak of the image of what alternate number one is in the whole project on the site. If you continue driving through the entry of the school, there is, right now, a loop that goes around for how the school uses right now is for drop-off and pickup. We are adding additional aid parking spots. Parking, because parking is always a prime real state in any school district. And they always, they, it's a good investment that they add. We did it as an alternate because we were not, we were concerned that the amount of budget we had was not going to be enough to complete the project. This project has been in the books for a long time, and we had that concern. Fortunately, we have enough money in the budget to pick up that contingency, that alternate, and also add a 12% contingency for $55,800. And at this moment, we are asking the Board of Education to approve the agenda item as presented. And I am open for questions.
Mrs. Weaver?
The entrance for parents coming in, that will be different than the entrance where the buses are coming in?
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
After me, if you can, put this line aside. Line is?
It's here. I can show, I can show her. It's right here. So the parents are going to come in here and go this way.
So the parents will still use the existing one that we entered right now. And where we exit, that will be just for the buses.
Right.
Because it's one-way.
Okay.
Buses will be just that one. Exactly. And then the parents or visitor staff will go that way and then turn around, make a left. There you go. Sit there. Thank you.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make sure.
We look into different schemes. There were three different options during our design. The one, this one, we picked for several reasons. Because it kept the buses separate from parents. We thought that was important. The other one is the way how the buses were aligned or parked versus the, towards the property, the building. And that anybody that parks in the parking for cars don't have to cross the buses. So this scenario was the one who gave us all those options.
Options.
And we consulted with the Department of Transportation, too, to find out which is the best for their buses. And we came with this scheme.
Okay. Thank you.
Kathy?
The, from looking at the schematic, will there be sufficient turning radius for? I'm assuming that as you have everybody showing sort of a left-to-right angled orientation that...
Yes, yes.
That the bus will have its, basically, all the front ends will be facing or in the direction of the school, so they'll pull out and around? There is enough, there is enough room?
Yes, ma'am. We keep that as a template. And our schools that we've been doing, that is exactly the radio for bus turning.
Okay. I'm just really pleased that we're able to do this. This, this was a very challenging property acquisition for a lot of different reasons, and it probably goes back over 10 years at least. So very...
The house was destroyed during the hurricane in 2003.
Yeah. So, and we had been working towards that end even longer than that. So I'm really pleased and very happy for Lady Marshall Dent. If you've ever been there for any of the parent functions, it is a real challenge. And goodness gracious, if you, if you, if you were in that lineup of smash-up of cars and you were parked end-to-end, side-to-side, and you needed to get out before anybody else?
You weren't.
Not happening. So, so thank you for pursuing this and making this work out in the best interest of the students and the staff and the families at Lady Dent. So, thank you. That's all.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. I have been there during arrival and dismissal time, so I have seen the challenges with the buses and traffic. So this is greatly appreciated, and it is abundantly needed. Because at a visitor parking lot, the buses and the visitors, it was not the best situation. But the principal and staff, they were out there during arrival and dismissal time, and they made sure all our students were safe. So I appreciate that buses are separate. That seemed to be the new design with the schools, and that it's going to be completed by August 21st, which is great for the opening of schools. Now, did you go to the chart of the layout? The black and white? Now, the buses will make a right turn. Which way do they go? Do they go left or right when they enter the bus loop?
They, they make a right, and then they park.
They make a right, and then...
Depends. I mean, if they're right in front or to the right, then they make a right. But how they park is right, they go straight and then directly into the diagonal space.
Oh. Okay. So they go straight in? Oh, okay.
And then when they go out, they go out from the back and then turn in the radio. There you go. Thank you, sir.
So the bus will be facing the front of the school?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now... Okay. Now, the parking lot directly adjacent to the bus loop, which they are separate. Yeah, that one. Who parks there?
So that is, right now, the how we designed this is for staff and visitors or parents.
Both of them?
It's mixed? Yes. It's, there's two groups. We haven't set up a specific. It's up to the principal to decide how she wants to flow her school.
Okay.
Two ways to do, two groups. And then to the left on the vertical parking, no, left, left, down, left, it's the handicap.
Okay.
So are there, are there any other schools that need their bus loop to be reconfigured?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Well, good.
This is the only end-to-end.
And if you notice, in between the bus parking and the visitors or staff parking, there is an opening that will have a gate, those gates that go in. That we will be using that for overflow for, like, in the evening for an special event.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have a question about paving the parking area. Are you, is there any preparation that you anticipate to resurface the existing parking area?
So, in the areas where you touch the new one with the old one, there is a detail in about milling, how to do the milling in between the two of them. We do have a line item for unit price in case we go over and we find asphalt that needs to be replaced. That's where most of the contingency would go. But yes, we have a detail on that. They have to go through certain, certain step in order to fill and then put the new asphalt on top.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Nagina, do you have anything?
No question. Thank you.
Okay. I just, I just want to say thank you. I love this, this cluster of transportation for 10 years at Lady Dent, through all of the parent, you know, events, the plays, everything. So I think, and, I mean, there's just so many ways that it could, things could not have turned out well if it was not for the diligent staff. And really, at drop-off and pickup, it was really all hands-on-deck. If you were not monitoring a classroom and you were out in the parking lot watching those children. And same thing happened with pre-K, too, because we had pre-K students there as well. So my only question is, is the student pickup and drop-off, is that still going to remain in the back at the side door where those eight new spaces are coming in?
So that's a very good question. And it's up to the principal to decide. But the good thing is about with this project, we are giving the principal two options. One, to continue with existing plan on doing it on the side, or she can organize it through the front parking and have a, like, a longer loop.
Right. Well, right, yes. Because with the traffic flow now, it would, I mean, it would make sense to go through the front. And then when people line up to pick up, then they can go back the road, straight back, you know, going back to 5th District Park, so.
I don't think she has made a decision yet. But the options are there.
That's fine. I'm assuming that that's what they're going to do. Otherwise, I don't think they would have parking spaces, you know, added on there, so. But other than that, yes, I agree with, you know, with Kathy and Mary's. It was, I mean, it was a challenge to get anyone in and out of that school. And then if you had field trip buses, it just compounded the whole transportation issue totally, so. So with that, if no one has any more questions, may I have a motion?[1747.28]
I would like to do this.
Okay.
I move that the Board of Education approve the construction award for the parking lot expansion at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School to J. Calvin Wood Jr. Incorporated in the amount of $465,198 and a construction contingency in the amount of $55,800.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, motion is carried. We will look forward to the construction.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
We look forward to the completion.
Exactly. All right, and somewhere, Mrs. Howe, with our facilities master plan. We're going to hear what else we're going to knock off this list. So keep going through projects.
All right, Ms. Howe?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Meeting with Zoom. So hopefully if you cannot hear me, let me know. This is our annual report that we have to turn in by July 1st to the public school construction program. And I want to let you know, this was a very challenging year for my staff to do this through fellow work and agencies not being available to us like they usually do. But I have to tell you, all the stakeholders that were involved, whether they were local county or state, really came through. And I want to applaud Mrs. Hayden for her work in getting research done to help us with getting this document done. So. Our update this year continues with our infrastructure plans that we have for HVAC roofs, projects to continue. Our enrollment, as we know, is kind of still hanging a little bit flat. We're still growing a little bit, but not to the point where we have the project capacity that we need. To that end, come July, we do have a capacity study that was funded. And under the current circumstances that we find ourselves, I think we're going to wait a little on that and see how things continue to go and how we might be able to use that project to look at future capacity needs as well as how things can work based on social distancing. So we'll see how that goes. Next slide. So our average age of our facilities is now 28 years old. And our focus, as I said, is going to be on, for the next several years, is going to be on continuing, continuing our systemic renovation projects. So we have three HVAC systemic renovation projects on within. We have two modernizations. One is Mechanicsville, which is the next project that we'll be asking for this fall. I'm very excited about that project as well. And Letty Marshall Dent's renovation. And then we have two projects that we're able to combine the roof and HVACs. Next slide. As we move forward, Mr. Whitten and I have worked quite closely together and we've included Miss Leano as well, of how we're using that critical infrastructure programmatic projects. We're really able to defer some of those renovations. When you see us be able to combine a roof or HVAC. The way that we're able to combine those and to stretch their life out is by replacing chillers and low pumps as we go along. So Mr. Whitten and I work and we'll start doing it this summer again to look at the next year's projects. Of how can we replace some component pieces and extend the life? And sometimes we're able to extend those projects out another five years. And it's really important for us to do that given the structure of the state of how we're funded and how we're capped off at a certain amount. It allows us to put the timing in to make sure that projects are going to be able to, to make it to the point when they get approved by the state. Just to give you an update on this pending state facility condition index, COVID-19 has delayed the launch of that as well. It will launch at some point and will then respond accordingly. But at this point, we have not received any word that's going to be moving forward anytime soon. So we'll just keep you posted as we move forward. Looking at key demographic data, I think, you know, if we had talked about this data a year ago, I was pretty confident in what the future looked like. And based on where we are now, we're, we're learning that, you know, that whole theory of the future is, is going to look like the past is going to change for us. So this year, we had already seen the effects of a reduced birth rate. Residential developments and approvals were remaining flat. Homeschool was continuing to grow. And as a result, Maryland Department of Planning lowered their enrollment projection model. So we've been watching and doing a lot of research about where we're going to head. And this shows a very slow growth rate, but it's still in an upward trend, which is what we want to see as a positive growth for the, for the community. How this is going to change in the fall, we'll have to wait and see how that enrollment looks for us. And then we'll make some adjustments. We'll work with the Maryland Department of Planning as well as all the other counties will because we're going to have the potential of one-time anomaly in our enrollment as the fall proceeds on. So we'll continue to watch that growth. Next slide. So this is, we get asked a lot about building new schools. And this really kind of highlights it, that light brown line across the top is the capacity mark we have to hit in order to be eligible for state school construction funding. When we look at all of the enrollment across elementary, middle and high, you can see we are well below those. And where we really want to be are the two lines, which are the elementary is the green and the blue. Or in this instance for middle school, it's the blue. That is the state capacity. And we are staying well under those projections or those capacities as well, or we're right on it. So we're meeting the needs of our students right now currently, with the exception of high school. That trend is going to show that we're going to have a bubble that's going to start occurring in, really in earnest in FY 22, 23. And we're going to have to see how we're going to address it. And that was one of the focuses to look at from the capacity study that we'll continue to look at. Next slide. Important for us, and this is what we look at every year and we coordinate where we need to place relocatables. If it is highlighted in yellow, it is in one, it's in excess of 100% of the capacity. The schools that are not have capacity available. And it is based on the state rated and the local rated that we look at those. We're still doing quite well and those numbers in the past have been much higher. Right now, we do know that our focus is, is looking in the southern portion of the area where we were looking to build a new school, which would be Evergreen and Carver and Park Hall. So we'll continue to watch those and see how those continue to play out as we move forward. Next slide. Same thing at the middle school. At the middle school, you can see we're right there. We're right at 100% of capacity. And at the high school level, Chopticon and Great Mills are at their capacity. Where we have a need, as we've known in the past, is at Leonard Town High School. With relocatables, they're, all of ours are still very close. So we talked a little bit about that capacity study. We're going to look at overcrowding at specific schools at St. Louis when we're ready to go. And then not included in that project scope, but we could continue to look at it would be the potential capacity changes as a result of COVID-19. So the important portion of the education facilities master plan is looking at where we're headed in FY 2022. This fall, we will be asking for the Mechanicsville Elementary School Modernization, a project that I've been working for quite a few years. And as much as we liked Project with Letty Marshall Dent's Parking Lot, this is another one that is, has been around for a while and is ready for its modernization. We have, we're in a really good place this year because I thought we were going to roll over some of the project funding that was in FY 2021 based on cash flow, the way state does it. I thought we were going to roll over some of the money into FY 2022. We were fully funded for our state request this year, which means our full allocation next year can go to Mechanicsville, which is the key to making sure that we can afford to keep these projects moving forward. And really allows us to start focusing on them in the timeframe that we have. So FY 2023 would be Town Creek's HVAC and Letty Marshall Dent's Modernization, followed in FY 2024 by Great Mills, a partial roof systemic renovation. We're already doing a portion of that now, but we're spreading them out based on their age. And Piney Point's HVAC systemic renovation. Moving into FY 2025, we have the other portion of the Green Holly project. And then the one that really is going to start taxing us a little in terms of our cash flow is going to be in FY 2026, when we get to the Chopticon High School HVAC systemic renovation. And you'll notice that in FY 27, we did not add any additional funds because, projects because we're going to need all of our funding for several years to, at the state level, to fund Chopticon's project. And with that, that is the educational facilities master plan. If approved today, it will then be forwarded on to the public school construction program. And concurrently with your approval, we do have it with the Department of Land Using Growth Management or a letter from them that will go with it that says that it is in compliance with all of the county regulations and policies. Back if you have any questions.
Mrs. Weaver?
I don't have any questions, but I'm really glad to hear that the 2022 for the Mechanicsville, that that will be fully funded. That's for the modernization. So that is great news.
Mrs. Allen?
I just echo what Mrs. Weaver said. Long time coming for both that and for Letty Marshall Dent. And I, I really want to see everything stay on track. And I hope that by the time the Chopticon High School HVAC work comes about, that, that some of the things we're dealing with now at the state level will have resolved in a, in a manner that is equitable for all systems across the state. Thank you.
Great. Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. According to your projections, there is no immediate need for a new elementary or middle school or high school. And the growth is slow, but it's, it's steady. So you're keeping your eyes on, especially the high school. I am so thrilled about Mechanicsville Elementary School. That has been on the lease for years and years. And it had to get pushed back for a variety of reasons. And that is the first school that people see when they enter the county coming from the north is right on the road. And we have many beautiful schools in the county that people don't get to see who's coming in from one of the main roads because they are tucked, you know, away from the main roads. But that one is one that you first see when you enter in the county. So hopefully it will get a major exterior facelift to the building. And I think that will be good. And I know the teachers and staff that are working there are looking forward to this renovation because I am very excited about it. Thank you so much, Ms. Howe. You do a wonderful job.
Thank you very much. This project is, is one that's been around for a very long time. And it is, it will definitely make a difference for that community as well.
It will.
At that school along the way, but it, it's ready for its full renovation.
Wonderful.
Jim, do you have anything?
Ms. Howe, you mentioned in 2026, you're going to renovate the Chopticon High School HVAC. How old is the system now?
So it was, it was taken, since Chopticon was one of the first schools that we did, there are components of it that are older than that renovation. So it is, a lot of it is new to the renovation that we did. But there are still some components, just like at Great Mills High School, there are some components that were older that are still functioning for us well. That was back in the 1990s.
Okay, thank you.
Nagina?
No questions. Thank you.
Ms. Howe, Kathy and I were chuckling not about anything you presented, but just about. We were very happy that the pending state facility condition index has been delayed.
Yes.
So that's what, that's what we were, that's what we were like chatting about during your, that, that is very good news for everyone involved.
Yes.
Particularly the school systems, maybe not the state, but for us, it's a good news. My only question is on the elementary school capacity for Evergreen. I know that, you know, we've been struggling with that. I don't know what, I know you made reference to what the building lot and what the building permits are. But what is the capacity built out at, in Wildwood right now? Because I know they just opened up that back section closer to the airport. And I don't know if, how that impacts our enrollment for the next several years.
So we very carefully watch their building plans and they coordinate with us quite well. But they do have several hundred homes that can still go into that community.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of, yes.
Right, so the original plan as it was done wouldn't have yielded as many homes because they were much more spaced out. But with the more condensed population that they have in there, the more urban development, they do have room and they will continue to be building for the next couple of years. So it is something definitely on our radar scope to watch of how, how that continued growth will occur.
Okay. All right, thank you. Because I know, you know, they just, they, every time you drive through there, there's just there, you know, it's another, another street that seems to be cleared. So I was just curious as to what that might eventually look like at that elementary school. So. Okay, if anyone has any other questions? All right, may I have a motion? Oh, Mary, go ahead.
I move that the Board of Education approve the July 2020 Educational Facilities Master Plan for admission, submission to the Maryland Department of Planning.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. The motion is carried. All right, thank you very much, Ms. Howe.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And we have one information item, which is Ms. Delahunt. Scott, I think he has, he, he's ready for you. He's got the presentation up and going.
All good.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good.
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 Thank you.
Good. I'm here to just give an update on the equity initiatives, kind of a year in review as well. And so, next slide. On the first, one of the first goals that was completed was a needs assessment in the form of equity chats and school and to, I'm sorry, with the school and department leaders. So throughout the school year, I conducted equity listening tours by visiting each school, community and department to chat about educational equity and the role it plays with their school programs and opportunities and equitable practices. Another thing is a review of current equity initiatives that we already have in place. And then developing long-range plans for support such as the equity professional development and resources, equity, educational equity curriculum development, and then cultivating connections with our community and organization partners. Next slide. Just a brief look back at the Equity Task Force and how far we've come through this process. The Equity Task Force is, was in place to engage in conversations about educational equity. And one of the key aims of that group is to develop an educational equity policy, or was to. And that, that addresses the educational equity access to rigor, our resources, our supports, and for all of our students and the school system. So that task force was created in May of 2019 to address educational equity. And it was comprised of school and community stakeholders. And the objective was to engage in the community conversation, again, as I said before, and to ensure that all students had opportunities to excel. And also to create the policy. So there were three committees that were part of the Equity Task Force that worked together to review and research and develop recommendations. The Policy Subcommittee developed the core statements aligned with our county public school mission, the vision, along with principles of our school system and community. The Partnership Subcommittee was linking resources and community efforts with the common goal of educational equity. And the Practice Subcommittee was putting into practice those efforts that support equity, including our academic supports, our professional learning and accountability. And, and so as we work through this process, again, as I said, we started in May of 2019. We had bimonthly general and committee meetings throughout that time. And it was based on our previous discussions, based on our previous discussions and with the community and school system feedback, we helped to draft a policy. So that was presented to you, the Board of Education, for consideration October 23rd. And then that draft was presented to the community and our staff members. We had great feedback from our administrative staff, our student, superintendent student leadership, student leadership advisory council. We distributed staff. We distributed it to the staff via our Signal, which is our digital newsletter. And we also received community and staff, community feedback through a survey that we presented. We brought that information back to the Board of Ed, to you, November 6th. And we also gave the opportunity for the public to comment. Next slide, I had to get right on that next slide there. And on December 11th, 2019, many thanks to you, the Board, for approving the Educational Equity Policy, ACA. And so that's where we are today. We have our policy approved and we're moving in a direction of regulation work. So we have regulation work groups that are comprised, that include administration staff, supervisory staff. And the regulation sessions are, have been conducted through March. But with COVID, we had to turn to the online platform, our Zoom platform, to be able to review, continued, and continue our revisions throughout April, May and June. And currently, we're editing and revising and going through work sessions, Zoom work sessions throughout the month of July. So we know how important it is to provide support and resources to our students and our families where it concerns educational equity and diversity and inclusion and achievement as well. And so with that in mind, the equity matters. Everyone belongs- And so with that in mind, the Equity Matters, Everyone Belongs is a site that was designed to do just that. It also highlights and celebrates all cultures, races, and ethnicities. And it's also important for us to make sure that we are investing in our teachers and our staff, and provide resources and supports to those who support our children. So we have several pathways or several ways to support our staff, our teachers and staff through the Equity Chat Focus Group. And those are developed as small groups that are available to staff at every level that create a safe and brave space for our courageous conversations about race and equity. The Equity Corner is, it highlights celebrations of cultures, races, and ethnicities in all of our schools and departments, and it promotes excellence in equity. There is a SMCPS Equity Site that displays the work of the Equity Task Force in the past and moving forward. And then, of course, we have school representatives. They are called the Educational Diversity Equity Achievement Leaders, EDIL. And these leaders include an equity representative from each of our school, our 26 schools, including Fairly One and Two Academies, and the Dr. James A. Forst Career Technology Center. Their purpose is to support school-wide and system-wide implementation of educational equity, multicultural education, diversity, and inclusion awareness, appreciations, and celebrations. So we have a lot going on there in support for our staff and teachers. Next slide. And with the focus of educating ourselves on how to educate others, there are several professional development opportunities available to our staff. Our Diversity Equity Modules through our State Schools Platform will be offered to staff throughout the summer until October. We have the Equity Book Study that actually just started. We are highlighting So You Won't Talk About Race, and that's conducted through, from June through August. It is a credit-bearing course. And Summer Equity Resources on the Equity Corner, it's currently, there is currently a Summer Equity page, and there's also an Extended Resource page that's going to be updated throughout the summer to include more webinars on cultural diversity, ethnicity, and proficiency, and digital libraries, and journals, and articles, and videos as well. So looking forward to the next steps, the Equity Task Force is currently online and reviewing and editing the report, and the task force has provided important steps for us to take in achieving our mission. This report summarizes the work of the group, and it provides key recommendation in a roadmap to achieving educational equity. So this report is currently being finalized through the, throughout the summer of 2020. Our subcommittees will be having work sessions throughout July and preparing the Equity Task Force final report to you, the Board of Education, in August. So we have covered a lot of ground in the year, within the year. So that concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions or comments.
Mrs. Weaver?
I know that you said that you have like an area for people to go and look at, see what kind of things, like, I guess you would say, like you said, videos or, you know, things like that. Do you have that up and going yet, or is that something that's going to be coming up soon?
It is currently on the Equity Corner page, available to all staff, teachers and staff, and they're able to access it. Usually, it is brought out through the Signal bimonthly, and so there's always resources there for them to be able to look at, conduct webinar, or participate in webinars, and so on and so forth.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. How?
You've been doing a great deal of work, and it really is paying dividends. So thank you very much for all of the outreach you've done and the many people you have brought in to have conversations that will help us address the issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you, Mrs. Della Hunt. You have been extremely busy in a short amount of time. Despite COVID-19, you have done a lot of work. I want to thank you for your Equity Matters, Everyone Belongs page. That's a lot of resources there. Where it say, Everyone Belongs, and that's what I like about that. You define educational equity, which you presented at a board meeting, so everybody will be on the same page, as to understand what exactly is educational equity. On your page, you talk about race and equity resources, or, you know, any staff member or anybody who doesn't know where to go to get good information, they can find it. And also, resources on if you want to talk to your children about race. They see a lot of things on the news, and they can't afford it because it's their life. So it helps parents and teachers how to talk to their kids about race, you know, in a way that is appropriate for the children based on their age and their abilities. And you also list four ways to support the LGBTQ and youth. Also, you have more resources about what exactly is Juneteenth. A lot of people don't know what the Juneteenth celebration is about, and it explains that. You have so much information, and you put out a lot of information. I like your book that you, you know, you're going to read with staff members to bring about better understanding, because we all have to live together in this world and get along so that we can move forward as a nation. So, you know, to learn about different people and get the right definitions and the right meaning, so we'll be talking about the same thing. You also lift a variety of community resources, and your page highlights Everyone Belongs, and I like that. So thank you for being our Educational Equity Assurance Coordinator, and I am looking forward to hearing your report in August. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
No questions, but thank you for your report.
Nagina?
So this past year, SLAC had worked a lot with the equity policy, and I know that opportunity allowed for students to gain a better understanding of equity in relation to SMCPS. And many students from SLAC were very interested in the regulation side of the policy, so hopefully that discussion can continue this coming year with SLAC.
Yes, it will. Thank you.
I just, I just want to say thank you. I know you and I have had several conversations at, you know, different college fairs about, you know, things that I noticed that, you know, I thought we could do to help the students. And I know you, based on your reaction and my conversation with you, I know you took that to heart and even implemented some of them. So I appreciate that. I think that you have done an excellent job so far. I think the task that you were faced over the next probably eight weeks, as we determine what school is going to look like in the fall, is going to be a huge mountain to climb as we make sure that, you know, the students in our system have the resources that they need in order to, to complete their education. And it's not just going to be the high school kids, it's going to be everyone from head start, pre-K on forward. So I'm glad you have a head start on it because, you know, with, with the school shutdown that has just been completed, and unsure of what it looks like in the fall, your plate is going to be overflowing, I'm sure. And I do appreciate the insights that, you know, that you did provide with Cabinet, you know, on, on steps that needed to be taken in order to make sure that the children that we did have that were quote unquote falling through the cracks, you know, during the fourth marking period, were addressed. So I think that was appreciated by all. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And so if I could, before we leave, Ms. Della Hunt, the, the task force, I had an opportunity through Zoom to go and look at their recommendations to date as they were finalizing their draft, and all the committee works came together in the, so it's policy and partnerships and practice. And then from that, all will be the regulation that then supports the policy that you've approved. We didn't, we're not waiting on the policy, all of that work to be finished. We're going to jump in and start with some of the things that are right in front of us right now. So three things. First, we are convening, as we do every summer, the Dress Code Committee to talk about what needs to change within the dress code, specifically to take a look at the Confederate flag, the conversations that have been going on around that, and how St. Mary's County Public Schools will appropriately have a dress code policy that reflects our system's values, and also gives concrete, explicit guidance to our kids so they know exactly what their expectations are. And that's going to be a really great group. They're going to get together in the next coming weeks. Ms. Della Hunt will be involved with Ms. Cheryl Long, who's the supervisor of Student Services and kind of owns the Student Code of Conduct. So we're going to, we're going to, we're going to look to that, and we're going to be very specific in the modifications that come from that. That's the first thing. The second, the task force, the recommendations coming forward, talk about the need to put resources to this incredibly important work as inequity in outcomes. When we look at the data, when we see persistent gaps, how are we putting our, putting ourselves to the work? So we can't, we don't have extra positions, we don't have extra money, we don't have extra people. But what we can do is we can look across the fantastic leadership that we currently have and see if we can align systems to best support what is the most pressing need of the system. So what you will see probably later this week or next week, we are reorganizing some of the responsibilities within the Division of Instruction, particularly to make sure that we are putting together resources so that we can really have the most, the most demonstrable impact. And so you talked about head start and early access. That's really important. So we have been working with Ms. Kelly Hall, who is currently, she's, she's titled as the Executive Director of Supplemental School Programs. We're really looking at how to leverage all of the great work that she's doing with, with that department. And that's, that's, that's head start, that is the Judy Center, that is the Title I, that is all of the, all of the things that begin. It's a lot of community outreach, it's a lot of how do we work with parents, how do we bring in partners, how do we try to mitigate a gap when it comes in before it becomes a larger gap? So we will be talking about how we are aligning our resources moving forward so that we can really have the greatest impact in the lives of kids. So look for that. And the last is tomorrow morning, there will be a press release, a joint press release that comes out from the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office, the St. Mary's County Health Department, and the Superintendent's Office, talking about a resolution that we will be signing next week, that talks about how important it is that the three largest public agencies in St. Mary's County, public health, public safety, and public education, all work together to make sure that equity is at the forefront of everybody's minds, and that the service that we provide our kids and our communities really is what addresses the greatest need present. So we're going to have the Dress Committee, we're going to talk about realigning some of the work here within the, within the Division of Instruction, and we're going to have a joint resolution that talks about how we have, how we move forward with some really explicit public expectations for public health, public safety, and public education. This county is, is really, it's a fantastic county in that you have such really strong, dedicated leaders within the school system, and then fantastic partners in the larger community, certainly within the public safety and Sheriff Cameron, and public, and public health, and Dr. Mina Brewster, as well as our ongoing and always-present partnering groups. There's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good work, and we're going to have to do a lot of work with our, with our staff so that we're ready for what we will be working with in the, in the fall. We have been separate for over 100 days. We have seen incredible protests and unrest and anger, and the need for us all to come together to help provide everything we need for our kids. And I love that Ms. Della Hunt is passionate about this work as we all are, and I love her, the reference to a safe and brave space, creating this safe and brave space where we can really talk about how we feel and respect that, and recognize that we want everybody to find themselves in a safe and brave space when we do get to come back together again in the fall.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to your report in August.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anyone have anything else?
No.
All right. With that, our next board meeting is not until July 22nd.
Oof.
I know.
That seems a while.
But we'll have town hall meetings and Zoomity Zoom things, so please tune in.
Watch Twitter.
Watch, watch Twitter, Facebook, our webpage. We'll also be doing School Messenger and email blasts to let people know opportunities for hearing what's going on.
So July 22nd, 9:00 a.m.
9:00 a.m.
Is our next one.
All right.
And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.